Underwriting support for this program is provided by the Eureka Teachers Association's School Board Liaison, Philip Mittelman. Thank you.
I am C1 and will be brought back on the consent agenda. I am C2, C3, C4, and C5, but there's no action report.
And, um, pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And while I have your attention, my name is Paige and I've been attending ZoBarnum for about two months. I originally started for credit recovery because I was behind my credits and now to graduate on that. So ZoBarnum has given me many opportunities such as classroom teaching at the one whole school and working with a young boy who has autism. So it's also allowed me to keep attending Urica High for two periods a day and continue in the NJRTC program, which I've been a part of for my whole high school career. And it's allowed me to make up my credits and continue on the path that I was on before. I'm working in an environment with my peers that I'm comfortable in and used to. And it's also helped me to continue forwarding my future and going towards college and becoming a teacher and being able to do what I need to get where I need to be. And now I would like to introduce Lawrence Stafford.
Hi, I'm Lawrence Stafford and I've attended ZoBarnum for the last two years. And in this time, I've found that everyone is their own person and not just the staff of teachers that do their job. Like for instance, when I'm going down the road, I can always go into the office and tell them the story of my problems, no matter what they are, big or small. As though I can turn in my homework and if I have any questions, I know they will be answered. Also, as though we have interact club that anyone can join and you don't have to have good grades to join or a certain grade point average. It's just pure fun and helping the Eureka community. If it wasn't for most of the staff giving me the extra credit, I can sadly say I most likely wouldn't have graduated high school. So thank you everyone for being there for me and now I can probably say I will finish and be a member of the ZoBarnum class for 2021. My next figure will be Jacob Ruby.
My name is Jacob and I've been a student at ZoBarnum for impressive three months. Yeah, but seniority or I guess lack of seniority isn't really my statement. Uh, when I joined ZoBarnum, I was about probably like 15 credits behind. I was not the best student in the way. And now as a point of me speaking, I'm only two credits away from graduation. And so ZoBarnum definitely helped me aspire to that. And, um, I've also just recently turned 18 and so I've had the awkward whole thing of growing up. And, um, ZoBarnum's helped me kind of get some aspirations and the teachers have been supporting me in all my interests and just kind of like giving me ideas, what could I do, you know, in the future? And I've gotten super interested in writing from all like the positive feedback and everything. So I'm actually working on some like fictional things and, um, just they are completely dedicated students and just support any kind of creative output that you possibly want, like music. We'll have people running around the campus with instruments. We've even gotten a lot of people into Dungeons and Dragons lately, which, uh, so now we have like level four barbarians running around. And it's an oddity, but it's a great one. So Rachel and Jackie are up next and they're awesome.
Hi, I'm Rachel.
And I'm Jackie.
And coming from Eureka High to ZoBarnum, I didn't expect the staff to be much different, but they all proved me wrong. The whole staff is full of caring people and they make me feel open to ask questions and get the help I need. They've all helped me on my journey to graduate.
Before I attended ZoBarnum, I was on independent study. I didn't do so well and I fell behind about 40 credits. While at ZoBarnum, I've caught up completely and even jumped ahead. Now both Rachel and I are graduating a whole year early as juniors and continuing on to higher educations.
Jackie and I are also involved in the interact club. It has provided me many opportunities to volunteer through both my community and my school.
We've done many things in the community, such as a toy drive. We played bingo with the elderly, a beach cleanup at the Samoa Dunes, and a Caesar Travis Day Jefferson cleanup. And we still have many more to come.
Um, I took the SATs this year and now I'm ready to continue to higher education. I'm going to CR in the fall and I plan to transfer to HSU.
Uh, I intend on going to CR for two years and trying to get my AID degree after I graduate. I have 22 credits left to go and, um, then I'm going to go to Sacramento to get my CODA degree, which is a Certified Occupational Therapist Assistant, so I can work with the elderly. So thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Any adjustments to the agenda?
No.
Information, students' reports?
Hi, I'm Ashley Russell and my senior project is called Love for a Child. And I had a partner for this and her name was Grace Dippenoff and we raised a total of $260 to donate to Eureka Pediatrics. And right now, we're in the process of contacting them so we can donate the check for them. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lanza Rose and for my senior project, I organized a book drive called Project Future, where I collected 850 books from Eureka High and now I will donate them to Alice Burney Elementary School through a book bingo night, which will take place on May 4th from 5:30 to 7:00. And it's Cinco de Mayo themed, so Alice Burney families can, um, come and pay 25 cents for a card and win some books.
And I'm Hallie Jong.
Hi, I'm Mike Kuhar.
Um, our senior project is promoting about financial literacy in the community.
Um, how we promote this, um, project, we went to some elementary school such as, um, Grant and Lafayette and South Bay and Alice Burney.
And like for this project, so far we've also like became part of the YAC, which is the Youth Advisory Committee, which is like we were working with CCCS, Consumer Credit Counseling Services, Charlie and Rosie. And then like we became like part of the Path to Prosperity, uh, which is the P2P, like it's a three hour, four day classes, Saturday classes. And then for those classes, we teach them like, we sell this class of motivational money management, banking, good credits, bad credits, needs versus wants, pretty much like keeping you away from debts. Yeah, so like at the end of the class, we actually have this graduation day, which like you get certified, well, a certificate that you've taken the class and you also get to like talk to, talk to the guest speakers there, which is like the banks and services out there, like entrepreneurs too. So which is a very great class too. Well, that's what we're doing at the moment. The class is still going on at the moment, so that's what we've done so far.
Any other student reports? Okay, Citizens Oversight Committee Annual Report to the Community.
And that is in your packet? And so basically it is an annual report that means we present information to the board and as part of the Citizens Oversight Committee, that just to ensure that we're spending our bond funds appropriately and what they have gone towards. We're hoping that next year will be our final annual report to the board and we'll have extended all of our bond funds at that time. And as we know, we only have secondary kind of bonds currently available. So this would be for the end of last school year. Are there any questions or comments? Otherwise, this is basically asking the board to receive this information.
Any questions?
No, it's just information only.
Superintendent's report?
Okay, well, um, I know several of you or some of you were able to be a part of every 15 minutes. I was pretty involved with that last week and I just want to state how impressed I was with the depth of that whole program. I really hadn't watched it before from the very beginning to that night, the next day. It's truly a phenomenal program that all of the high school kids at least got to participate in terms of observing it. It was incredibly, incredibly moving, incredibly, incredibly well done and it really was done by our students with of course, staff support. And I just want to compliment them on the job well done. And it seemed to capture the students' attention and they truly were listening and I felt fairly thoughtful about what the message was. And of course, that is, you don't drink and you don't die, like you've been drinking. And so I just want to compliment the students at Eureka High and the staff that were supporting them for that program. But I thought I'd let the board know, um, or just share again what we're looking at doing. April 6th is our staff development day district wide, so we won't have any students, but our teachers will still be very, very busy doing a lot of different things. Um, in the elementary level, they're going to be working on strategies from explicit direct instruction, teach like a champion, discussing books such as Framework for Property, looking at grade level standards and formative assessments, pacing guides, CELT tests, instruction for English learners. So those are some of the areas that the elementary schools will be focusing on. The middle school is really going to be spending their day on learning more about positive behavioral support and intervention for, um, intervention and support for our students. Eureka High will be looking at constructing meaning and pacing guides and assessments. ZoBarnum will be at Eureka High in the morning and continuing with construction, constructing meaning in the afternoon. Some of our classified staff will also be having some in services on that day. And in particular, on updates on Power School and how to do attendance tracking and some things like that. So we will be very, very busy on Friday and I thought the board might want to know as they might want to drop in on some of those staff development activities.
Board member reports. Wendy?
Oh, it was a busy couple of weeks. Um, on the 22nd of March, I believe it was, I attended the city county meeting and, um, basically received an update on quite a few of the community projects and things that are going on in the city and the county. Um, and I need to thank Jimmy Smith and, um, Virginia Bass for helping me with learning a new set of acronyms. They were actually very good at stopping and identifying each acronym and I really appreciated that. Um, and they would like to keep us or like us to keep them apprised of any potential change in our configuration or plans for such as it may impact traffic or congestion. And I said, I would. Uh, the 23rd, I was fortunate enough to attend the first chunk of the Redwood Coast Jazz Festival where our students from, um, Grant, Alice Burney, and Lafayette, um, did their little, I guess it was actually the Grant students that did the, um, am I right? Help me out here. Was it Grant?
I think it's Grant.
It was Grant that did the Charleston and their New Orleans style Paris Hole Walk during the, oh, it was, it was very enjoyable to watch and very well behaved, they were. Um, on the 26th, I also was able to watch the every 15 minute scene outside the district office and that was, as Leanne said, incredibly, um, impactful. Um, I was wondering if the, I know they did a video that they presented the following day and I was wondering how to get a copy of that or if it's available or because I was not able to attend it. Does anybody know?
Yeah, I'll know.
Somebody, somebody will figure that out.
We'll get it for you.
The students and Ron Perry's group that worked on this project are phenomenal and the amount of energy and effort that went into this was, I called a friend whose son was involved on the next day and was mentioning something. He said, well, we're, we're on our way to the morgue to identify his body. I was, I was flabbergasted, that's the extent and the depth of this program and it, and it touched a lot of people's lives. Um, on the 29th, I was able to attend, actually April 2nd, the WASF review at the high school and that was a very busy day. And I was able to attend the meeting with the site administration, also a meeting with the leadership and follow-up team and a meeting with parents. Each of those were an hour. Great information. There's an awful lot going on, but it never fails to amaze me how much we have going on at that school. And I'm just gratified that we still have so many programs and, and things that are, that they're out in the community and people look to the high school as leadership in some of these areas. And at conferences, they talk about Eureka High and what they're doing. It's just, it's just gratifying to know that we can still have so many things going on over there. Um, I also spent some time at the Lafayette Elementary School with the after-school program, Trina Scheffler's team of the Food for People Construction Project. And, um, I just want everybody to know that on April 7th, this will be the third year they're participating. They have won first place two years in a row. Um, and what they do is they gather food, non-perishables, they construct a project or build something with it and then it's a competition and all the food gets donated for, to Food for People. And that's going to be happening during the Art July at Roy's Italian Deli. They're working very hard and hoping to collect about $800 worth of food to donate. A group of 30 to 40 students are working on it and it's going to be phenomenal. And I think that's what happens.
Okay, Hank?
I'll be brief. You covered a lot of the things that I was interested in and had a chance to see some of the pieces, so thank you very much. The, uh, the one thing that I wanted to bring up, and I saw in the paper that we hired a new high school football coach, I guess. And I hope to hear more about the individual and introductions possibly and, uh, welcoming them to our community and where he's going to teach and all that goes with it. Howard?
Franken?
Actually, I don't have a report. I wanted to ask a question. It's my understanding that that program, the two-day program that you were all talking about, it goes to all the four, the four main high schools in Eureka, I mean, in our county, one after the other. So actually, it only goes to Eureka High every four years, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, that's really good to know because that way every, every student's going to get to see it if they go through our schools.
Correct.
That's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
And Susan?
Um, I, um, went to another, uh, learning session to learn more about the Common Core standards that are coming out. And this one was, uh, the emphasis was on mathematics and it was really interesting. It was fun. It was actually fun to spend a few hours with a whole room full of teachers. It was really, um, I had a really good time sitting and I, one of the observations that was, that I made was pretty funny while they're all sitting around and they're all highlighting things and pulling words out. I'm just watching how they all process things. It's quite interesting to be a non-teacher in a room full of teachers. But, um, it was, I, there was a lot of excitement in the room about the new standards. I think they're going to be, I think they're going to be really, um, a nice change. There was also, um, you know, some, also some trepidation, just trying, not quite sure what's coming. And we just kind of scratched the surface. Um, we're just barely kind of getting into it, so we really need to get some more depth and to really understand what it's all about. But I think it is going to be a good change. And I had bought my ticket for tomorrow night for the FFA fundraiser, so anybody that hasn't, if there's still some out there, hopefully, um, I think it's going to be a lot of fun. I'm looking forward to that.
Okay, this is public comment on non-agenda items. This is the time designated on the agenda when members of the public may bring before the board matters that are not listed on the agenda. Legally, no action or significant discussion can take place about a matter not listed on the agenda. Therefore, board members and district staff members usually will not respond to public comments. As printed on the agenda, individual speakers will have three minutes to address the board. Each topic is limited to 20 minutes total. And we have a lighting system there where when you begin to speak, it'll be green. When you have one minute left, it's yellow and red, we're asking you to stop. I have a number of green sheets here and the first one is Philip Mittelman.
Good evening. I'm Philip Mittelman and the co-chair of the English Department of Eureka High School. I also happen to teach a video production class. And one of the first things I teach my students is that when you are interviewing someone or trying to present someone speaking, never do it in profile because it makes you look stupid. And so if you get a 45-degree angle on your presentation, it allows the speaker to address the room and at the same time, address the board. So my suggestion is to make me look less stupid in the future is to shift this just at a 45-degree angle, possibly like this, so that the speakers are standing here and they can address everyone in the room. And I think because there's more people watching our videos on the internet and on Access Humbled, it'll make our speakers look better, even our students look better. Not that they need any help. And the light up there would be really nice, little highlights in your hair. So there's a lot we could do and I'd like to work with the board in the future on this. Thank you.
Wendy Rowan?
Yes, I'm Wendy Rowan. I'm the executive director for First Five Humbled. I was at, uh, your meeting before last when, um, concerns were expressed about cutting the Eureka Teen Parent Program. It's my understanding at your last meeting with the approval of your fiscal sustainability plan that included making the cut through the Eureka Teen Parent Program. Um, I want to also say that I really understand the challenging and difficult situation that you're in. I served myself as a member of the board's trustees for the Trinidad Union School District for eight years. In the last three years, I was the president of the board when my daughter was in school and we went through some challenging times when I was on the board. So I really clearly understand what you're wrestling with. Um, I'm here tonight to, um, make a suggestion. Uh, those of us that think about young children, that understand the importance of the early years and how the developing brain is so critical to the future success of young children, of children, students in your system, um, the suggestion I want to make is this. This is a 21-year-old program that has served teen parents and babies well for many years. And as I said when I was before you last, I want you to understand the context in which you're making this decision, the magnitude of this decision. We have a deteriorating childcare system, early childhood system in this county for a whole host of reasons. Um, we know we've lost, you know, teen parent programs in other, in other school districts. Um, it is, it is a model program, as you know, that is, you know, has best practices. What I would like to suggest, and there are a number of other folks in our community who think about this, who think it's a good idea, I would like to suggest that you find a way to keep this program for the next year. Keep it for one year, fund it for the following year and let those of us, uh, have an opportunity to figure out what to do next, to figure out a plan, to do an assessment around teen parents in the county. There was originally a, a study and an assessment that was done to establish this program. It's been 21 years and a lot of things have happened and we owe it to this work to, um, be more planful about making such a dramatic change. Uh, First Five Humbled has the ability to convene health professionals with expertise around this issue, early childhood educators around this issue, education folks around this issue. We can get the best minds in this county around the table around this issue and they're interested in working on it. We know that you're charged with huge responsibilities and what I'm really coming here to say is that we have some capacity to help and to do some more planful work around this. And I really encourage you to reconsider this decision and I've given you my card. Anybody phone me, please, you know, talk to me. Um, we'd like to be a resource, we'd like to be a help and we think there's a more planful way, um, to make a change like this. So thank you.
Lori Dutra?
in the Eureka City Schools CalSA, Teen Parent and Infant Toadler Center. I have spoken to the board before regarding our program, but I would like to give a program update. If my numbers are correct, our district makes approximately $5,220 per year in ADA for each enrolled high school student. With the potential closure of our program, just based on the financial loss, not taking into consideration those students' educational needs and their family's needs, we will be losing at least, at least three student parents ADA next year with the sad anticipation that these numbers will most likely increase as we see more, more come in towards the end of the year. Um, three students have indicated to us in the last two weeks that they will drop out of, um, our school district next year because of the lack of childcare and support services. And they didn't say this in anger because of what might happen to the program. Um, these, these were really desperate pleas. It was really, you know, a sad thing to talk to them. So it was, yeah. None, and none of these, um, excuse me, teens are interested in independent study because they learn best through hands-on learning and lecture time, in-class seat time with an instructor. And we're also concerned because those three students also have siblings in our district and that may lead to more students leaving our schools. And, um, these kids don't have any resources for child, for quality childcare and they just, they have no resources.
If my numbers are correct, our district makes approximately $5,220 per year in ADA for each enrolled high school student. With the potential closure of our program, just based on the financial loss, not taking into consideration those students' educational needs and their families' needs, we will be losing at least, at least, three student parents ADA next year, with the sad anticipation that these numbers will most likely increase as we see more, more come in towards the end of the year. Three students have indicated to us in the last two weeks that they will drop out of, um, our school district next year because of the lack of childcare and support services. And they didn't say this in anger because of what might happen to the program. Um, these, these were really desperate pleas, and it was really, you know, a sad thing to talk to them. So, it was, yeah. None, and none of these, um, excuse me, teens are interested in independent study because they learn best through hands-on learning and lecture time, in-class seat time, with an instructor. And we're also concerned because those three students also have siblings in our district, and that may lead to more students leaving our schools. And, um, these kids don't have any resources for child, for quality childcare, and they just, they have no resources. And many other case management and resources available to pregnant and parenting minors have been discontinued in our community over the last few years. And as far as I know, we are the only educational and personal case management services available in our county for exclusively pregnant and parenting minors. We are also only one of two licensed infant toddler childcare centers in Humboldt County. So, just these two facts make it imperative that we keep our CalSafe program and our licensed infant toddler center, two different components, open and serving our students and their families. So, um, thank you again for considering the continuation of our program.
And Jill Kamura.
I didn't know that Philip Mittlemus listened to me about the side view. Thank you. It wasn't cute when I saw it on the internet. Okay, I'm here again. My name is Jill Kamura, and I'm here representing the CalSafe Teen Parent Program and the Eureka City Schools Infant Toddler Center. As most of you know, since our programs were eliminated on the fiscal stability plan for next year, I have come here to speak with you for the third time about our programs. Our programs consist of the CalSafe Teen Parent Program and our Eureka City Schools Infant Toddler Center. There has been some continued conversation about possibly keeping our case management component for teen parents and eliminating the infant center. I feel both these programs are important and vital and necessary for our students and our community. On that note, tonight, I would like to speak about some recent statements made by State Superintendent of Public Instruction, Tom Torleksen, and I hope I'm not butchering his name, poor Tom. Tom is very concerned about the state of early childhood education in California. Mr. Torleksen stated at a news conference, and I quote, "For decades, California has been committed to a simple but powerful idea, that children deserve more than just a safe place to wait while their parents work. They also deserve a chance to learn and to grow. Quality early childcare is the key to helping young children develop linguistic, cognitive, social, and emotional building blocks necessary to succeed in school and in life." Joining him was Assemblymember Ing, who said at the news conference and further added that he believes this is especially true for children that come from low-income and working-class families. He also believes that slashing our support for childcare and development programs is unwise and will ultimately cost the state more in the long run. As one program director stated, "We provide our children with high-quality learning experiences that will prepare them academically, socially, and emotionally, not just to excel in kindergarten, but to succeed in life." Torleksen also stated, "The consensus is very clear: invest in kids early and reap the rewards of better-educated, more productive workforce, and a healthier state, or pay the price later with more high school dropouts and more young people headed for trouble." For decades, our early learning and childcare system has been a model for the nation. Teachers are well-trained, the curriculum is carefully developed, and longstanding partnerships exist. I've stated many quotes about the need for early childhood education because I believe that these statements were so true and vividly spoke to why both our programs are vitally important. I would like to close with another quote that I found amusing and true from, from our superintendent. Elmo and Barney are great TV characters, but they are no substitute, substitute for dedicated early childhood education teachers and a quality early learning and childcare program. Thank you again for listening and considering, considering reinstating our program. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the consent calendar.
I'd like to pull J-19. For discussion, yes. Discussion action. Discussion action.
Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion on the remaining consent calendar?
I move that we adopt the consent calendar except for J-19.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the consent calendar with the exception of item J-19, signify by saying aye.
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 None opposed, motion carries. J-19, approve special education transportation.
In reading over this, uh, letter from Rich Hanger from, um, HCOE, and, uh, and listening to some of what, um, Mr. Pierce has said previously about ways that we could lessen our encroachment from special ed, um, the thought of providing some of this transportation on our site, or from Eureka City Schools is what's in my mind. And can we do it cheaper? Especially, uh, when I read their contract information and their proposals based on fuel at $3.75 a gallon. So, the encroachment's gonna be quite a bit higher than they've even projected in this contract. I'm, I'm very uncomfortable with the contract because it's already, uh, understated for what the situation is. I mean, fuel's at least a dollar a gallon higher than what they're estimating. And, uh, are these, so the questions are, are the students coming in from, out of our normal transportation zones? Are they coming from different areas? Why do we need the counties to do this busing for us? Or is it some of our students going to Glen Paul? Can I get a little more clarity on it?
Yes.
Yes.
And, and primarily, they are busing our severely handicapped students to the Glen Paul Center. I would say the vast majority of the students that are being transported fall into that category. They do also provide some transportation to, um, our, our, our own schools. For example, it's, it's pretty typical that if we have a wheelchair student, that they'll provide the transportation for that student. In addition, some of our more challenging special ed students, um, sometimes we ask the county to transport them because their buses are smaller, and the numbers of students riding on them are even smaller than our small buses. Um, in terms of where the students come from, it's anywhere within our city lim, our, our school boundary limits, so it could be coming from Southern Humboldt, or not Southern Humboldt, Humboldt Hill, could be from Freshwater, could be within the city, but it's not any other district students that they're transporting.
It indicates, um, in, in the proposal, that there are 78 total students coming that are being transported for Eureka City Schools.
Correct. The majority of those are Glen Paul students.
Okay, I didn't realize that the number was that large going to Glen Paul from Eureka City Schools.
Yes, it is. It is. And it, and it's not just Glen Paul Center per se, I should extend it, it also is the HCOE, um, programs, where there's a program at Ridgewood, there's a program at Peninsula, there's a program that our kids go to, um, because they're severely handicapped classes that we don't operate. And so, it's not just the Glen Paul Center, but it's some of those satellite classes as well. They provide the transportation for some of our toddlers that are in preschool programs. So, you know, those are kind of the, the students that they, they are transporting for us. In terms of costs right now, our, our buses are at capacity. We would have to buy buses in order to transport those additional students, so it's the additional cost of buying those buses is kind of worrisome.
I'll move for the approval of J-19.
I wasn't done yet, but anyway.
Second.
Thank you.
I should've started with that first.
There's been a motion, second to approve J-19. Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, none opposed, motion carries. K-24, student expulsion, student 11-12-009, resolution 11-12-035.
Move for approval of K-25, or, uh, K-24, excuse me.
I'll second it.
Motion is second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 None opposed, motion carries. K-25, schedule special board meeting on April 25th at 5:00 PM.
And that would be, um, a request, I think, to have the board consider our local educational agency plan, um, for the addendum, and it is, uh, necessary for us to submit the LEAP plan on an annual basis, and we are asking the board for a special meeting to be able to do that within our time limits.
Any problems? Is there a motion?
Didn't, uh, didn't you ask that we start at 4:30? Not for that one? The closed session. Well, we don't have to ask for that one.
Okay.
I move that we schedule a special board meeting for April 25th at 5:00 PM.
Second.
There's been a motion, and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, none opposed, motion carries. K-26, award a bid, 2012, re-roofing Winship School, gymnasium proof.
Yes, we're asking the board tonight to accept the, um, bid from, for the Winship School for, for McMurray &amp; Sons of Eureka. And, um, we had a couple of folks come to that bid walk, and two, um, company contractors placed bids, and the lowest bid was McMurray &amp; Sons, and this is for the gym roof at Winship.
Motion?
I move that we accept the bid from McMurray &amp; Sons for the roof, new roofing at the upper gym at Winship.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's been a motion, and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 None opposed, motion carries. L-27, local education agency plan addendum.
As we, uh, just approved setting a, um, school board meeting for April 25th, thank you, and that is to, uh, hopefully, uh, adopt the local educational agency plan for 2012 to 2015. Um, and so, I wanted to present that to you tonight, well ahead of time, because it is a very thick document. And, um, I just wanna give you a very brief little bit of background and maybe a very slight bit of orientation to the document itself to, to help you in the coming weeks. The first plan that we adopted in our district was in 2003, uh, with a response to No Child Left Behind. It was again updated, uh, the complete plan rewritten in 2008. Then, when we, as a district, became a program improvement district, uh, we had to adopt, uh, what was called an addendum, and that was in 2010. And now, because we are in PI year three, and the State Board of Education has taken corrective action with our district, we are required to completely rewrite the entire plan, which is why it's so big. I would not choose to do this, but it is a requirement. Um, and it also, um, we're required to follow the same template that came with, uh, the original No Child Left Behind law in 2003. So, uh, with that, I've given you in the binder, a, um, a sort of a table of contents to help you orient yourself as to, yes, that's it, as to what, uh, tab one, tab two, where to find some of the major pieces. The, um, the, you might say the meat of this plan is in the performance goals. Performance Goal One is about, uh, that all students will achieve proficiency in reading and in math. Performance Goal Two is about English learners and, uh, the English learner programs that we provide to make sure that they become proficient in English. Performance Goal Three, student, all students will be taught by highly qualified teachers, and, and we've actually, 95, 98% have met that requirement already. Uh, Performance Goal Four is that all students will be educated in learning environments that are safe, drug-free, and conducive to learning. Um, we don't receive funding in this area anymore. However, I, I was, uh, somewhat disappointed to learn that even though we don't get funding, we have to address that area, uh, so, which is why, um, it's in the, in the plan. And Performance Goal Five, all students will graduate from high school. Finally, uh, Tab Eight has additional descriptions of, of mandatory provisions for Title One. Now, in, uh, I submitted this plan to the state March 9th, and the way that, they say the process is gonna work, they were gonna provide the district with feedback and comment, but I have not yet, as of today, still have not yet heard from the state, any feedback. With that, we were supposed to incorporate their feedback into the, the final plan and bring it back to the school board for adoption, um, in April, and then they are asking us to post it on our website during the month of May, and where it will be available for people. So, it has been a plan in development, and I am still seeking comment, I'm still soliciting feedback and input from people, from principals, from cabinet members, from curriculum committee, so that the, the document that you have tonight, um, in terms of Performance Goal One, and those are, I believe, some of the most critical areas for reading and math, how we improve student performance in those areas. There are some changes that we have made, um, in between the time that this was printed and put into your packet and, and today. So, what I plan to do is to give you an update. I'll be sending to you an update of, uh, this is section on reading, this is the section on math, and so you can look forward to getting those three-hole punched, so that you can replace them in your binder, because I, I wanna make sure that you're kept up to date with changes that have been made along the way. You may have questions about, um, why is the funding as it is, and where's this money coming from? Are we really getting it? Do we have the money? And so, please feel free to contact me if you have any questions, I'd be very happy to explain that. And, uh, there, like I said, there, there have been revisions since the time you received your copy, and there may continue to be more revisions up until a point in time that we ask for adoption.
So, um, before, we've, we've set the meeting for April 25th for adopting it. If we haven't heard from the state by then, then we have to wait, is that right? Because we, we have to know what their input is before we adopt it, or will?
I do wanna have at least a conversation or an email from someone at Department of Education before we go any further, yes. I, I wanna know that we're on course, and, and if I don't hear from the state, um, then I'm not gonna ask you to adopt it in April until we know that we're on the right track.
Thanks.
Thanks for the advance. It's helpful.
L-28, board policy, administrative reg 6142.7, physical education and activity.
I had the pleasure of, um, meeting with the physical education teachers, um, and very happy to say that we have come to a meeting of the minds on how we are gonna recommend that we proceed. I also received some feedback, uh, from individual members of the board, and I appreciate that. So, what it looks like with the, uh, the PE policy, um, one of the issues, one of the big issues had to do with, um, as a school board, where do you stand in terms of how many years of PE would you like our high school students to have? I think that's one of the main issues. Uh, another main issue is specifically, how are some of these exemptions gonna work? Which exemptions do we approve, not approve? And a third is what are some of the other courses or activities which, for which PE credit can be granted? And so, um, I wanna assure you that, um, with the various different alternatives and options for, for language in the policy itself, that whatever the school board decides, we will craft the language to make sure that it, it, it meets, uh, with the board's pleasure. So, in- So in, in between the time that you received your packet and yesterday, when I reached an agreement with our teachers, and then today I also checked with Mr. Jordan, make sure that we're on, that we're all together, I produced a few more visuals to help navigate this, so I want to hand these out to you at this time. These, these charts will replace the ones that are in your packet.
While that's, while that's going around, can I ask that this was in our packet, this was also in, this was in the, in, this was, it's the same thing, right, except in a little bit larger?
And I'm going to replace it. Can I ask you to throw that in the way?
Both of them?
Uh huh.
Okay.
Fran, I, one was reduced, then another packed, and the other one was so.
I figured that that's what it was, because I went over to find you.
And there's copies of these two handouts going out to the audience?
Well, the copies are going out, can I make a comment?
Sure, go ahead.
I'm Darren Smith with the Junior ROTC. Four years ago, all the different services of the Junior ROTCs in California lobbied to get PE credit added to the Junior ROTC. What it boiled down to was the superintendent of schools for the California Department of Ed left it up to the individual districts. Some districts allowed them to have PE credit, some of them did not. If we were allowed to have a PE credit for Junior ROTC, that would boost our numbers, get us into that hundred cadet mark. If we get in that hundred cadet mark, then we could possibly get back into the Junior ROTC business instead of the NNDCC business, and that would bring back the Navy money back to the district. So that's just something to think about while you are deliberating over this PE situation.
Darren, would that be creating that PE class that we've talked about, or separate from that? You want to just explain that period?
So for a PE credit for Junior ROTC, in the frameworks, on page ten, it allows that for the districts to do that. It would be a military conditioning class to include combatives and other portions of the eight levels of physical education, and it would be a very good class for the kids to get into.
Would this be one semester, one year, or?
One semester. One class, one semester. I think that would put us over the, if I can get forty kids, that would put us over that hundred, a hundred kids.
Would that be, would that class be then, would that be your class, or would that be taught by the PE department?
That would be my, that would be my class.
And what would that class be like? I mean?
Every Friday, we have physical education in Junior ROTC, that's PT day, Physical Training Day. So we start with warm-ups, do like a daily seven type of warm-up, and every, every Friday we do something different. So we do some combative, like with pugil sticks, we do some self-defense, we do some warming up, and we'll do things on the track, you know, relay races, tug-of-woars, just different things all through the, all through the, all through the week. If we were going to go to a military conditioning class, it would kind of mirror a program called Semper Fit the Marine Corps has. It's a physical conditioning class that the Marine Corps puts out, and it's called Semper Fit. So I could get a lot of information and workouts and things from them.
How would the class, should we adopt that, interface with the core standards we're talking about for physical education?
They meet all the core standards. I would have to develop, get with, you know, develop a class in accordance with all the references, the ed code, so that the class meets all the PE, you know, ramifications.
So?
Does that answer your question? Puzzle look on your face still.
It's a, what I heard you say is, we'll get to it if we approve.
If you approve it, I'll make it happen.
That's what I heard you say.
Are you talking about within the, the class of your elective, which is NJROTC or NNDCC? Is that not an additional class, not another hour, but one hour out of?
It would be within the five classes that I teach.
So a piece of each of that, of each of the classes would be dedicated to?
No, no. So it would be, it would be a whole, a whole period. So it would be like, for instance, third period would be military conditioning.
So how does that compare to the minutes that would normally be associated with taking a PE class?
It would be the same amount of minutes that the kids have in a PE class.
So I think what he's talking about is, he currently only does it one day a week as, as part of his current program, but it would become an actual class five days a week, is what he's offering.
Okay.
So the kids in the program would still do on Fridays, we would still have, you know, PT on Fridays for the normal uniform kids, and then it would be open to anybody in the, in the school who would want to take the military conditioning class.
And for your program, you would get credit for all of those kids as if they were part of the NJROTC program?
Yes.
To meet the hundred?
Yes.
For the one?
Correct. Just like the kids currently that are not uniform kids but take my maritime history class. I can count them towards my numbers because they're getting the curriculum.
Interesting.
Dr. Lentz was, this, and I'm, I'll just reference Darren, was he consulted as one of the stakeholders, or was it just the PE department that was discussed?
No, I did not talk with Mr. Darren.
Are there other stakeholders out there?
Your buttons up.
There are the physical education teachers, we might want to, well, let me back up a little bit. In your packet, in the proposed policy, on page fifty-four is the, in the middle of the page, is the language that we're, that is the key here. The board shall approve the courses in grades nine through twelve for which physical education credit may be granted. We had discussion about the possibility of including the NNDCC PT. We, in Education Code, gives us the ability to name marching band, for example, as well. That's a hypothetical case. And there's also, in the proposed policy, the school board is able to give an exemption to students who participate in after-school sports. These, these other alternatives were discussed between Mr. Jordan and myself, and I discussed these other alternatives with the physical education teachers as well. And we, the physical education teachers and I came away with an understanding that because of the rigor that's required in the physical education standards, that we could not recommend, we could not actually endorse courses other than physical education courses. But it is, it is ultimately at the board's prerogative to make that decision which physical, which other courses in grades nine through twelve can receive physical education credit. And in terms of the, the other stakeholders, we, we could extend our reach to include the varsity sports coaches, we could extend our reach to include marching band, if there was one.
Underwater basket leading.
So could I continue?
Yes.
Okay. That was, as I indicated, one of the main issues that was being debated the last time, and, and that was which other courses or activities could, could we grant PE credit for, for students to take? And at this point in time, the recommendation that is brought to the school board is that we not grant PE credit for any other courses or activities. But it, as I said, that is the prerogative of the school board. The, the second major issue, one of the ones that we spent a lot of time talking about last time was, how many years of PE do we really want students to have? And it, it seems to be most consistent if we recommend two years of PE. So that the, the chart that you see with the color, the blue, green, yellow, and tan, that reflects a requirement for two years of PE. Even if a student were to pass the fitness test as a ninth grader, the student would still have to have one more year of PE. And as it's shown in the chart, it can be broken up as two semesters within the next three years, sophomore, junior, and senior, and that is consistent with current practice. So that would have little impact or no impact on current practice at Eureka High School. The, as it was explained before, and as the discussion with the PE teachers, according to Education Code, physical education is required throughout grades nine through twelve, four hundred minutes every ten days, and that's a default setting. So physical education is required unless exemptions are granted. There's many ways to grant exemptions, as we discussed last time. One of the ways is by passing the fitness test, another way, there are some temporary exemptions for unusual circumstances, and there's also the permanent exemption when a student completes tenth grade and turns sixteen. But this, this color-coded chart shows you how things would look with the recommendation that students must have at least two years of PE. So that was the second big issue. The third big issue has to do with the specific exemptions themselves. One of them, which was proposed, which was talked about, was that we, for a student that is in varsity sports or some other rigorous training program, that we give an exemption for that student. The downside of that, though, is that participation in a varsity sport does not include the, the cognitive portion of the physical education program, it does not include all of the standards that we are asked to apply in our, in our policy, and is required by Education Code. So that's a summary, that's a summary of the major issues that I've been able to sort of tease out. And, and now I, I'd like to draw your attention to a couple of the more specific passages in the proposed policy. On page fifty-seven, in the middle, you see a phrase, item number three, paragraph three is lined out, and that is the phrase from the CSBA model policy, which would allow us to grant an exception to a student in an interscholastic athletic program, and our recommendation is to not include that. I would also like to draw your attention to page fifty-six. At the bottom of page fifty-six, you see bold italic statement. This was a mistake, that it appeared again, because I recall us talking about removing that from the last time, and it should have been taken out, so please cross that out.
The bold thing, or just the bold?
Just the bold italic. Couple other things that I'd like to point out on page fifty-eight. At the top, it describes evaluation of the program. This is a responsibility that would be one of the assistant superintendent, as well as the principal of the school, to, to monitor the instructional minutes. As I indicated before, Eureka High School had not been completely operating in compliance with either existing policy or Education Code, and it is something that we need to pay attention to in terms of instructional minutes. And so our expectation would be that in the future, the principal and the assistant superintendent will monitor the physical education program to make sure that it meets the standards that we would adopt. And that monitoring is also described on page sixty-three, monitoring moderate to vigorous physical activity. The policy also reads, and as it is in Education Code, that fifty percent of physical education class or session time should be moderate to vigorous physical activity. One of the proposals that we talked about yesterday is taking a look at some of the pieces of our existing policy that was approved in two thousand, that has some, some language which might help us out, might apply to the current time in terms of a process, a committee that would be convened to review student requests or parent requests for exemptions. Because as is evident in the guidance from the California Department of Education, we are not allowed to, let's say carte blanche, just a blanket wave, a whole group of students or a whole class of students, that the exemptions provided for in Education Code need to be applied individually. And so a process for doing that could be described, and we could draw some language from our existing board policy. I included that in the packet as well. So I would suggest that we might scoot that into the administrative regs. So tonight, for example, if we approve of the proposed policy, we could bring that to a consensus vote the next time, while we work on the administrative regs to fine-tune how we deal with some of these exemptions.
I would like to ask, did, did you get a, an answer to the, to the business of the students who do not pass the physical fitness test, they don't have to take PE every year until, or every year until they do pass it?
Well, it, it's, how we, how we, how we word that, it's, yes, I did have an, I did get an answer, and so the Education Code is really clear. Again, the, the default setting is four years of PE. You got to have PE every year.
Right.
Unless you're eligible for one of the exemptions. And one of those exemptions is passing the fitness test. And another exemption is if you reach sixteen years old and you've completed tenth grade, you can apply for a permanent exemption. So that essentially allows a student to take two years of PE, and then unless the student happens to be a young junior, then they could qualify for that permanent exemption.
The other question I wanted to ask, if we allowed the NJROTC, or what with D something, that's what it's called now, it'd take me a while to get used to that acronym. If he was allowed to do the PE with his group, would he be classified as highly qualified in the area of PE, or would he have to be, or, I wondered, that's the only thing I wonder about, like, he looks qualified. And I would think whatever he's going to teach is going to be more rigorous, a lot, very rigorous.
Well, I don't want to take any weight, anything away from the PE department.
No, I know that.
And I'm not a PE teacher.
I understand that.
But if the California ed code says that I can get a PE credit for kids in my program, then I'm a, I'm a go.
So then, that would?
You might say it's, it's a loophole, Fran, that the education allows, because if you look at page fifty-five, there's a, in a sense, the answer is yes and, and no, okay? So I want to try to explain both of those.
Okay.
On page fifty-five, it says under staffing. it says under staffing,
Mm-hmm.
"Physical education instruction shall be delivered by appropriately credentialed teachers who may be assisted by instructional aids and so forth."
Yeah.
But, it also, Education Code also gives the school board the ability to grant exemptions for students who participate in activities that you designate.
Oh, okay.
So as I read that-.
So, that would be another exemption, then?
Right. It would be an exemption, as opposed to, or, or, I'm sorry. It would be, it would be a class for which PE credit is-
Given.
Is given.
But it wouldn't be a PE course.
Right.
So I've had a bit of time to speak with a number of people about PE lately. What I'm understanding, and this is one of the things that I wanted to share with the board, and that possibly you fall into this category too, is that when I think of PE, I think of jumping jacks and jogging, and that's about 50% of PE. And I forget that the other 50% is actually the academic end of learning about physical fitness and the education part, not running laps and doing jumping jacks. And what I'm understanding is that this 400 minutes, ninth grade, 10th grade, 11th grade, 12th grade, traditionally, what we have done is allowed PE to be accomplished in those two years. And that at the high school, the teachers have made a program that encompasses everything that they believe, that the students, well, not everything that they believe, but given those two years, they've put together a pretty comprehensive package to get that information through to the students, correct me if I'm wrong, in two years, in a two-year program. They've, they've managed to take four years' worth of the education piece and seem to be comfortable that they can accomplish that in two years. So the, the question I think before us would be, everybody understands the obesity issues and, and that, you know, there's a, a big need for physical education. Is it something we can accomplish in two years? And if we're, you know, we're deciding on how many years do we want our students to have of physical education before they graduate? The second part of that would be, from what I understand, are we comfortable allowing exemptions at all? And if so, for what purposes? And we've talked about academic event, you know, for academic reasons, because of impacted schedules, is that part of what we want to do as a board? And so that's the question I'm struggling with. What do we wanna say is more important than PE? And the third question I had was, what would qualify as in place of or instead of a regular PE class? And this is a new one that I hadn't thought about.
I'd like to jump in there, if I may?
Absolutely.
On page 54, and, and I need, I need to correct my own statement that I just made to you. I was an error.
Okay.
At the very top in that box on page 54, it, it discusses granting physical education credit to other courses. And it indicates that any course-
Okay, that's where I read it. This is where I read about junior-.
Yet, any course for which physical education credit is granted must also meet requirements in Ed Code pertaining to minutes and the assignment of appropriately credentialed teacher.
What is that saying?
It's saying that-
That you could grant it for varsity baseball, or for?
It is, no, that, that's the strange thing about the Education Code. The participation in varsity intercollegiate athletics is an exemption, as opposed to PE credit. So if, if we were to give PE credit to another course at Eureka High School, it must be taught by an appropriately credentialed teacher. Any, any course for which we grant physical education credit-
Credit.
-must be taught by an appropriately credentialed teacher. And there are also guidelines here that we would wanna make sure that the eight content areas of the physical education program were also covered. And, and I'm, I'm quite certain that Mr. Smith could, could do that, could put together a course to do that. But it does create an additional burden that we would need to address the issue of the credentialing.
The highly qualified, that I answered about.
I don't agree with that.
Well, and I would, I would, you know, I haven't looked into it in this particular manner, but I certainly have been very involved with determining whether or not our teachers meet highly qualified requirements.
Yes, we have.
And what I can say, similar to, you know, we give math credit, for example, or civics credit if it's taught by an ag teacher, if it's determined ag-civics. They don't have a civics credential, per se, but because it's an ag course, they can teach a broad variety of topics under that credential. If this is appropriately named, like he was talking about, that specified it's part of an, oh, N-N-D-C-C.
N-N-D-C-C.
Course, then it, and if it's N-N-D-C-C, physical fitness class, he would be appropriately credentialed to teach that course.
I personally would like to look into that as part, would then it become, be, become part of our policy on PE. I would personally like to look into that to find out how we would fit that in, because I think, I think it's-
And having seen DEI, DEIs chasing recruits around in basic training, I'm sure it would be rigorous.
Well, and since this is just discussion, we can certainly bring back-
Yeah.
...answers to the questions.
And it would also have to include that 50% of education qualities, which would-
Well, the standards would have to do that.
Hank?
In that paragraph that Dr. Lynn's just pointed out, it does suggest, or it does state specifically, while it is not necessary that each individual course include all eight content areas. So, it isn't necessary for each course to address all eight content areas. Not only did I read the packet and tried to figure out what the changes actually were, I, I looked up on the California Department of Education website, the actual code sections, to read them, so I'd be better, when people stand up and claim this, the law says so-and-so, it gets very confusing. And in reading that, and I, I think we're all in agreement that we do have the power to make some exemptions. And our priority, I thought, in our last meeting, was to ensure, encourage, motivate students to try and to pass the physical education test. And we were saying that many of the students didn't try to pass the test, which seems kind of against what we're supposed to be doing. If a student could achieve an exemption for passing the, the test that the state mandates for ninth grade, yes, it would possibly reduce the number of sections if we made that exemption po-.
But are we saying-
Possible for them. But we could still require two years of PE credit based on the NJROTC, N-N-D-C-C, component, online components, academic components. There are many ways that it could be addressed. I'm looking at ways to get kids to actually try on this test and to pass it, and if they are physically fit, to give them some credit somehow for that.
That's what, that's what you see in front of you with this revised graph with the four rows, the color chart, the second one, which is pretty much as the current practice is, that after the first year, then students are required to take two semesters at any point in time in the next three years. And in conversation with the PE teachers, I learned that that would be motivating, because then students are in control of their own schedule, that they have the flexibility where to place PE in their, the rest of their high school career.
Or how they obtain it.
Mm-hmm.
When we say two semesters of PE, I hope we're talking in the broadest sense.
But if you're talking about this green shaded area, there's also an exemption that is allowable for grade 12, a permanent exemption. So if you're a freshman, you pass the, the test in ninth grade, you take your next two years as your exemption, and then you get a permanent exemption, you wind up with one year of PE.
Our high school graduation requirements require 20 credits of PE.
Right.
That's where it comes in. It isn't in this policy.
Right. And, and it also states in the policy on the graduation requirements that, unless otherwise exempted by Education Code, so it's very circular. But what I would like to suggest is that the, by the board's decision, with your direction, we could mandate locally that all students have two years of PE. That, that can be your direction, and then we can carry out the policy as, as you direct us to, to carry out.
Stephanie, you look like you really wanna say something.
Hi, dear.
Hi, dear, too.
Why don't you come to the podium?
I'm Stephanie Jackson, co-department chair of the Physical Education Department. And what I really wanna say is, sorry about the angle. I, Hank, this is really directed at your statement, because one of the things that concerns us greatly is that if a student who's 14 years old passes the physical fitness test, what we're saying to them is they have nothing more to learn. That, for the second year of physical education, that basically because at that point in their life, they happen to be at a physical state where they could pass this test, but they're 14, and they have a lot more to learn. They have things to learn. And so, if we say at age 14 that they can have an exemption because they passed it, then what, what are we saying to them? That if they pass their test in English, that they shouldn't have to take any more English? No. We know that they have more to learn. We know that there's more after the age of 14. So, the, what you're, motivating them is, there's lots of ways to motivate them, just, we have to be careful that if we motivate them by saying, if you pass this test, you don't have to learn anymore. They're 14, of course they'll take that. I, I sign up for that.
That's, well, I'd like to respond to that in that, in requiring two years of physical education for graduation requirements, you have not stated that. You have stated still that there is an option of how they obtain it. The California High School Proficiency Examination at the age of 16 allows a student to test out of high school and go directly into junior college. Again, that is a test that doesn't mean they've received everything they need to know in the world, but they can test out of-
True.
...graduation requirements and leave high school legally at the age of 16. Very similar.
It is very similar, but would we really wanna encourage 1,200 students to do that?
It's an option legally for them at the age of 16 to take CHSPE.
True.
I'm suggesting that at-
Age 16.
If they, at the age of 14 or 15, as many will be, if they pass the test, then it opens up options for them for that second year of physical education.
Right. But currently, physical education is the option. And our, our stand is that we would like to keep it that way, because other classes that you call physical education potentially aren't physical education. They are something else, so they need to be called, like Leanne said, something else. They can't be called physical education, because they're not. They could be called physi-, you know, NJROTC, physical fitness, but they aren't physical education. The other thing that I'd like to say is that we're required by board policy to have 42 students on an average in our physical education classes. And so, other forms of physical education that aren't called that, would they be required to have 42 students in their class? So, I don't, I don't know if the NJROTC class would have to have 42 students in it, and if it did, where would they go? So, he can handle the, you know, 17 students or whatever, and I have no doubt that you would do a great job. I'm not, this is not a personal thing, but I just wonder whether the class size would be the same and where they would go. And maybe you would like to come and teach in the PE department, and have it be a real PE class. So, I mean, there are other options like that, too. So?
So I think we would really love to get direction from the school board on some of the major issues. And one of them is the number of years that we want to require of all of our students. And with the will of the board, then we can reword the policy to make sure that it carries out the will of the board. Another area, we seek your guidance, is your direction, is in which exemptions to, to act upon, or which exemptions to, to consider.
So, so that I understand it correctly. What we currently do now, what, what's currently happening at the high school, is all kids take PE in ninth grade, they take the fitness test. We're not currently mandating them to take, that they have to take two semesters of it in 10th grade if they don't pass the fitness test. It's just, but they have to take two seme-, all students take two more semesters throughout their high school career. So kids are taking two years. Your recommendation, between you and the PE teachers, that what you were saying, that you guys came to a, up with a recommendation for us, is that the change would be that if they don't pass it in ninth grade, they have to take both semesters of PE in 10th grade. They don't, they don't get to space them out throughout the year.
That's one of those, I'm sure.
Exactly right.
And then they can be tested again in 10th grade?
Yes.
And then if they pass, then they can get the exemption?
Yes.
If they don't pass, well, they have to take it again in 11th grade?
That is the next decision point.
Okay.
If they don't pass as a 10th grader, then they either are required to take physical education in 11th grade, or seek and be granted the permanent exemption.
The other, the other thing that I, that I don't think we've been doing, it sounds to, the way that we've been, the way that we've done PE with having two years being a requirement, I don't know that, because the, all of the exemptions are supposed to be on an individual basis. So we've kind of just been exempting groups of students, because I never asked for an exemption, I know, with my kid, 'cause I didn't know, I, I just knew he had to take ninth grade and then two other semesters. I didn't know that, that I was supposed to, you, I don't think we, I don't think anyone's been asking for exemptions. So I, I don't think, I mean, how would that work? Are we gonna have to have, that's 1,200 students, is every student gonna personally have to ask for an exemption? Because it's supposed to be on a personal exemption basis, 'cause that's not how we've been doing it.
We, we would work out a process, and that's what I'm suggesting, is that we come back with administrative regulations at a, a later time. If we could consider and agree upon a direction for the policy, then we can come back with administrative regs and describe how we carry out the, the process for granting exemptions. And it would probably incorporate a little bit of the existing policy, which defines a committee that convenes to consider exemptions.
So technically, if we're doing it correctly, then a kid should take PE every year unless they personally ask for an exemption?
There was someone in the bathroom to speak also.
Go ahead.
Really, that just came into play with the new legislation about the passing of the fitness test. It hasn't been that way very long. So this law that states that a student gives up their waiver option if they don't pass five out of the six components, that hasn't been around very long. So, really, nobody needed to ask for a waiver until it came around, because now, if you fall into the category that you don't pass the test, then you have to take physical education for two semesters in your 10th grade year, and then you can ask for the waiver, the permanent waiver, in 11th and 12th grade. If you pass the ninth grade physical fitness test, then you have the two semesters, and it sounds like would have to ask for that permanent exemption for the two years. And typically, students take a semester in the 10th grade and a semester in the 11th or 12th grade. So if they planned it on their navigator, had their four-year plan all set out, they could potentially be finished with their physical education in their 11th grade year and not have physical education in the 12th grade year. So they would have that permanent exemption. But it hasn't been very many years bef- But it hasn't been very many years since SB 78 passed.
So for your help in navigating through these issues, I included some guidance in your packet, and it's on page 79 and 80. On page 79, it includes a very nice, very concise summary of these exemptions. And then on page 80 and 81, it addresses the issue that was just referred to. At the top of page 81, it is very clear that we cannot grant exemptions for whole classes or grade spans. We apply the exemptions to individual students after considering their age, their grade level, and their status with the physical fitness test.
John?
Yes, all right.
Do you have to go up here?
Yes, you do.
My name is Natalie Tree. What I see as a monitor, the kids can't even bend down. They don't know how to play games, or they're arguing. We have to kick our grandchildren out of the house because they're on TV, iPods, and they're not moving. And even they're overbeats. So let's face it, when we went to school, we went for four years. Pass it. If the kids have some problems, they cannot play, or something like that, you excuse them from a doctor or a parent. This is a new generation. We have to, they should never drop PE. It's part of playing the game. It's part of life. You play games. It's all about games. Let's move forward.
Okay, so personally, I would like to make sure that every kid had a minimum of the two years of PE. Now, if they pass the test in the ninth grade, if they want to spread that out over the next two or three years, that's fine with me. But I'd like to see at least the minimum of two years. And I'd like to explore Aaron Smith's idea of a military PT class as being qualifying for one semester of that.
So we can come back with language that does that?
I'm one board member, but that would be what I would wish.
I would be satisfied with passing it in the ninth grade and then having the exemption, but maintaining a two-year graduation requirement, 20 credits for graduation, being separate from the board policy regarding physical education. And I would like to see it include the PT option.
Military PT.
I agree.
What would the benefit be between having two different items? I mean, if we're making board policy, why wouldn't you want the policy to state two years and just leave it up to the graduation requirement to fit that? What difference would it make if we didn't combine the two and make board policy two years? As well as graduation, two years?
Graduation required, requirements are really the final word on our policy.
So why separate the two?
Because these laws continue to change. And to keep policy up with exemptions and the laws as they're stated, I would suggest that we're probably going to have a policy that lasts longer, that more accurately reflects what we want by keeping it in graduation requirements.
I agree.
Susan?
I would also, pretty much what John said, would like to see the, pass the fitness, if they pass the fitness test in the ninth grade, that they have two more semesters of PE. If they don't, that they have to take it in 10th grade.
As shown by that colored chart that I handed.
Yes. And then I think it would be nice if Darren and the PE teachers could get together and maybe see if they could come up with something that would be standards-based, that they could, that would work.
So what else are we talking about allowing an exemption for, other than that particular program? There's been a talk about possibly varsity sports or the online programs that you can?
That is possible, and it is not our recommendation at this point in time. It's not the staff recommendation.
The online courses are considered PE courses. Is that correct?
Yes, it's possible, yes. You can get credit for that.
If we decide that's what we're willing to give credit for. So I think the question would be, are we, and I'm not saying we have to decide right now, but are we interested in looking into any other possibilities for giving exemptions?
I would go with staff recommendation and not allow those.
I want to make sure that the online options are available. I want a breadth of options, that it's not locked into just PE courses at Eureka High School that we're talking about can satisfy.
But that's what we're just talking about. Are those part of the exemptions you want to allow?
That's not an exemption, I don't believe.
You're right, it is not. Those would be other PE courses that students could enroll as we allow students to take, they get credit for distance learning courses. That would be another course, another type of course they would get credit for. The recommendation that I referred to is that we not grant exemptions for participation in varsity sports. That is the staff recommendation. However, if the board would like us to consider granting PE credits. So there's two issues. They're very close. We get them mixed up. The one is the exemption. You can give exemptions for varsity sports. The other is what courses do we give PE credit for? And so if you would like us to consider still allowing, granting PE credit for online learning, which some students do, then we can include that.
So it sounds like we had decided not, to go with the recommendation and not grant exemptions, but what are we considering for giving PE credit for?
Right, that's right.
Rick, why don't you come to the podium?
Very quickly, I think we're talking about specifically that the course is offered through BYU to get PE credit. I'd be real anxious if we created a language that said we weren't going to allow a BYU course to replace a graduation requirement. For example, a student fails a semester of junior English, goes to BYU online, takes the course, and we approve it towards graduation. And so we don't want to be in a situation where we have a senior, for example, that has two more semesters of PE, for whatever reason, fails it, and then they don't have an option to do a makeup through BYU, for example, to earn those additional five credits to graduate on time. The other exemption I would hope we would consider is for kids that have a late birthday, born on November 1st, take two years of PE, don't pass the fitness gram either year, go into their junior year, they're not 16, and so they can't apply for that two-year waiver that their grade level friend who is born on August 15th can't apply for. It seems unfair.
But it's the law, it's the ed code.
Yeah, so is there a way that we can work with that? Or are we setting up a group of kids who, just by their birthday, and I think we've talked about, you know, the, you know, they're, because we talked about kids that we don't think possibly may never pass the fitness gram. And so if you're born on November 1st versus August 15th, you have to take at least an additional semester of PE your junior year, or take it till you turned 16. I guess then you could come in and say, "I'm not taking it anymore. I want the exemption. I'm not going to go anymore." I don't know. You can see how that could play out, though. But I think we can foresee it, so we need to have.
I don't know how we could change that, though, because ed code says 16. It's not, I can't change, we can't change somebody's birthday. I mean, if they're not 16, they're not 16.
That's true.
I don't think we can change that, if that's what the ed code says.
But we can create exemptions.
We can create an exemption for it.
We can create an exemption for it.
But then how far back do you go?
I'll look, I'll look and see what we can do.
It is a great time, I think, for us also to look at what we're doing in middle school PE, because the pressure comes in the ninth grade.
Right.
And we've had, you know, as was articulated, all these years to come forward with PE classes. And we already have the model in place in the district when it comes to reading intervention and math intervention. We look at the high school exit exam, for example, and say, "Is this 7th grader on path to complete the exit exams and successfully pass it?" If no, then we start to look at interventions. That's obviously not the only gauge, but we know there's a point at which they're going to be measured. At least with the high school exit exam, we have two years to get kids ready to take those exams versus eight months or so in PE before they take the fitness gram. So one other thought related.
So one of the things that I'm hearing is that it would be desirable to consider granting, the ability to grant physical education course credit for the NNDCC PT. And there was also the question, what about online learning? It seems like that is desirable. Using BYU as an example, students sign up for that and meet the requirements for the online learning, then it seems like we might want to also grant physical education credit for one of those courses as well. And that's what I'm hearing so far.
I'm not sure about this online learning. How many semesters would you be talking about?
I believe all ninth graders are required to take physical education.
Yes.
So are we talking one semester or two semesters of online?
One semester. Well, what is the?
It's a one semester program.
My preference is that, again, we, once, after that, if they pass that ninth grade fitness gram, then those options become open to complete the other two semesters of physical education.
Okay, and there are some students who, because they have so many other courses that they're taking, that it's difficult to fit PE in, or maybe they have a, they're a young student for being a junior, would not, wouldn't we want to allow the student to take a BYU course, for example, and meet the PE requirement, and we should be able to grant credit? That's one of the things that I'm hearing. And I would appreciate having some direction from the board on that.
Stephanie wants to say something.
Sure, go ahead.
Is the BYU course a one semester course, and then you're done with it, or is it two?
You can take, there's several semesters.
So you can theoretically take more than one semester of the same, but a different level?
Remember, that costs money.
Right, that's what I want to know. Does it cost money? So now we've got the haves and the have-nots. If you get to take it online, that's not fair. Let's forget the birthday. That's not fair.
Stephanie's at the podium, if she can speak.
I'm willing to share it. We have worked effectively with, and it's in the policy, the previous policy that you have in your board packet. We, students have been able to take classes at CR and HSU as well and have it count as physical education credit. And no one has ever been opposed to that. So BYU option, but as Linda said, it does cost money. And CR is relatively inexpensive. I mean, a unit is $15, I think. It might go up, but. And HSU often offers courses outside of their campus that are all really acceptable. So there are options, and we always encourage students to take courses out in the community. So those are viable ways to get physical education credit.
That's what I was asking before. Would we have to itemize which of these courses? Would we have to know in advance and say, "Okay, these courses we are going to allow to qualify as a semester credit of PE"?
That's what.
How many of them are there?
That's what would be desirable to have in our policy, to have it really clear exactly what courses we would accept for PE credit.
You'd want the courses in policy?
Courses come and go, the description of them, the content of them.
I'd like to table this again.
Well, this isn't, this is just a discussion item now, because we need to hash out some of our.
If we're going to have a list in policy, this could go on and on and on and on. That's unreasonable.
Well, I think you have a consensus of the board on every point, except for this possibility of online learning, so.
We'll work on some language and bring it back.
Okay, great.
Can I say something, because my daughter did online learning for PE.
You have to come up here.
You have to come to the.
For her, and I don't speak for every student, but for her, she could not fit PE in and still go on exchange to Argentina for a year, and still get Gilder in, and still get all her college stuff in. She just couldn't do it. And it wasn't that she was opposed to doing PE, but she was an athlete on the side to add to it. And she did the online course at BYU, and it was expensive. I'm going to tell you that. She also did one at Humboldt State, and that was when they waived high school students to be concurrently enrolled. I don't think they do that anymore. I don't think there's funding for that. But we never know, that could come back. But what they told her at Eureka High, and I don't know if this was written in stone, but if it was called a PE course at BYU, and if it was called a PE course at HSU, where she took weight training and fly fishing, and, oh my God, all this stuff. And she did the written one at BYU, which was, she learned more about health and safety in that course, along with the Eureka High course. It was amazing. She learned so much, and if it was called PE at the time, if it was in the PE section of those colleges, that counted. Now, I don't know if you could just throw that in, so you don't have to list 5 million places.
Thank you. So I think you have a consensus of all, except for the one point, and maybe it can come back on discussion action. Okay, L 29, budget update.
Okay, well, now for dessert. Anyway, we, this small packet of information has come to you a couple different times. And I'll go through fairly briefly, and really what I wanted to try to work through tonight is less the significance of the numbers and what they mean from period to period, but try to walk through how our ending fund balances and our funds ultimately funnel down into what we call our reserves. And I'll step through that, and there are copies up by the monitor there, so. The first three pages really are just a recap of information that we went over as part of our second interim. A different way of displaying that, showing the differences from period to period. The first page, A1, is our general fund comparison, combining both our restricted and unrestricted funds. The B2 does the same comparison, but does so just for the unrestricted portion of our general fund. And A3 does the same thing for the restricted portion of our general fund. You can see that there are variances from the various periods. Again, I think we covered much of those as we had the second interim presentation, but if you have any particular questions on those, I'd be happy to try to answer them at this point. Or if you'd like more detailed accounting, I can do that for you offline as well. So with that being said, I'm going to move on then to the first chart that has some color on it. And it's B1 in your packet. Again, what I'm hoping to walk us through tonight is how we, how our various funds are structured in our general ledger, and how they ultimately funnel down to what I'll call the usable portions of our various funds, in essence, our unrestricted and our special reserve. So as you see here, we've listed out the various funds. So as you see here, we've listed out the various funds that comprise all of the funds for the district. There's 12 of them listed here, all the way from the one that we deal with the most, which is the general fund, and then some of the ones that we tend to not have a whole lot of interaction with, Fund 20 Retiree Benefit Reserve, 67 and 68 are self-insurance funds. The two lines that are bolded here, the first one being the general fund unrestricted, blown up and bolded, and the special reserve, Fund 17. Those, for the most part, is where we would look to say, these are funds that we really have available to us, and not necessarily just unrestricted, but that we would pull from or utilize for funding our various programs and our various expenses that are out there. You can see very quickly the unrestricted general fund, ending fund balance, and that's what that is, is being drawn down over the course of time, to the point that as we get to 2013-14, the general fund unrestricted is down to about 2.1 million. Our special reserve is at 1.5 million. Those two together, roughly $3.6 million, I would say is, in terms of any fund balance, what we have to work with. Everything else, for the most part, is committed or restricted. Stop me if you have any questions, and I'm going. So through the use of color, hopefully it will make the point. The yellow band that's there is our net general fund, so it's our total general fund ending balance. And again, you see that it's a combination of restricted and unrestricted, and we see it dwindling over the course of a second interim on through our 2013-14 projection. Remember the color yellow? We'll come see it in a couple of slides beyond this point. And I want to draw that comparison, so you can see how those, how they filter through the various charts here. But quickly, I'll move to B2. The stacked bar shows again how our ending fund balances are being drawn down through second interim of 2011-12, and our two multi-year projections. The large, or the two components that actually have, that show figures in them are the general fund unrestricted and the special reserve. Again, you can see how those, not quite as illustrative, but you can see how at least the blue portion, the general fund unrestricted, continues to decrease as we go through the multi-year projections. On to page B3. And if you're tracking from page B1 to B3, you can see that our total general fund is, from B1, is the same number that we're now giving additional detail on here on page B3. So the yellow equates to the yellow. The blue portion up above is our unrestricted resource, which is where most of our activity takes place, and that is a major component of our overall general fund, ending fund balance. I've also tried in this slide, and it says down below, the unrestricted balances are shown in the bold. So everything from 000, 0000 unrestricted, all the way through to 1100 state lottery are, in essence, unrestricted funds. Some of them have designations. At one time, we had expected to perhaps spend money in a particular way, on particular projects. Deferred maintenance is probably the best example of that that I can put out there. But there's no restriction, no prohibition, saying that we can't spend those dollars on things other than deferred maintenance. And in fact, as we go through the projections, we're going, we see that we're spending money that we have set aside at this point for reasons other than the deferred maintenance. So we're going to be pulling from that particular category to help fund the rest of our operations. Same with our adult education, that those flexed funds that are there, we'll be pulling from that, not just to fund adult education, but to fund other parts of our operation. Again, we've got that blue band up there, and that's going to correspond to the numbers that we're going to see on page B5. And we'll, in essence, blow that line up, so that you can see additional detail in how this is all filtering through. Hopefully, we'll be able to see that. I'll skip to page B4. Again, another stacked graph, and these are general fund, ending fund balance, the components of it. Once again, we see that decreasing number over the course of time as we go out to our 2013-14 projection. And on this slide, I've highlighted, if you will, or put numbers to three particular categories. Blue, the bottom one, our 000 unrestricted. The middle, I guess that's blue as well, is the deferred maintenance. I'll go with purple. Okay. It looks different here than it does on the screen, for what it's worth. But anyway, you can see that that is the deferred maintenance. And again, we're seeing that particular resource decreasing over that three-year period of time. And last but not least is the adult education unrestricted portion. I'm going to step back for one moment and say, don't want to confuse the adult education portion of our general fund with the actual fund, which is adult education Fund 11. So this is, what we're looking at right now is still encompassed within our general fund. Does that make sense? Okay. Good. Then last, but, next to last, again, if you look down at the bottom, that is the general fund unrestricted portion down there, and that corresponds to the blue line that was on page B3. We're just adding additional detail, or giving you additional detail, to show what comprises that particular line. So these are various things that we have set up. I'm going to go to the bottom three. Stores inventory, prepaid expenses, revolving cash. Not much money there. There's not much behind them, but they are categories, and they are ways that we designate some portions of our overall general fund unrestricted dollars. The most important line to us there is really the top line, and that's the designated for economic uncertainties. And the designated for economic uncertainties, which is a small portion of the overall general fund, along with our Fund 17 special reserve that we saw on the first page, those two come together, and in the next slide you'll see it, comprise what we would call our formal reserves. So we talk about reserves a lot and what that really means, and I'm trying to make the point that when I'm talking reserves with capital C and a capital R, these are the two lines that we're really pulling from, the designated for economic uncertainties and the Fund 17 special reserve ending balance. Those two numbers together comprise our formal reserves. If you take that number and divide it into our total general fund expenditures, including our transfers out and our uses, that gives our budgeted reserve level. So if you were looking at your second interim reports right now, and the multi-year projections, there's something at the bottom of the page that expresses, here's what our budgeted reserve is, and this is exactly where these numbers are coming from, and hopefully would be one and the same as you would see in your multi-year projections. They are, I checked. So with that being said, we see for 10,000, 2010-11, we had a reserve level of 712, 7.12%. We increased as we went into our second interim projection for 1112, a little bit down for 1213. But at the end, as we go to 2013-14 for our projection, we still have on paper a very healthy reserve of 8.29%. And there's been a lot of conversation about what's an appropriate level of reserves, 3% being kind of the standard that's out there. So we're almost, at this point, talking about a budgeted reserve for 2013-14 that's three times what that standard is, if you will. Again, on paper, that's a really nice thing to be looking at. But then I'm going to take you to the next two slides, and again, make the comparison, and I know we talked about it at second interim. But this shows our cash balances compared to our ending fund balances. And you just whip all the way through, and we get down to 1314, we project a negative cash level at that point. And I want to clarify, when we're talking cash, we're talking very specifically general fund and special reserve. It doesn't include our capital reserve fund or any of the other funds that were also included on the first page. So just those two funds that we're talking about. But that total cash, that projection of a negative $1,003 compares back to the, and I call it the selected ending fund balances of 3.8. If you were to look at your first page, it's basically the net general fund of 2.3 million plus the special reserve of 1.5 million. That's where the 3.8 million comes together. And it all culminates in the last, the last page and the last chart, which shows that divergence over time of cash compared to the ending fund balance. Put differently, as we go out to our 1314 projection, we have about 3.8 million in what I'll call usable ending fund balance compared to a negative cash projection of about 1.3 million. And that's it. Any questions?
At the end of that, that 3.8 million, that represents the, was it 10.2% reserve? Is that what you just said?
What was it, about 8%?
Eight. It dropped to eight?
Yeah. So I'm sorry, the 3.8 isn't our formal reserve. Our formal reserve was, and I'm using that term a little bit loosely, 2.6 million.
2.6.
So your chart is showing $1.3 million negative cash.
Correct.
As of June 30th, 2014. But it actually goes negative in like October or November of 2013.
Yeah. There's two or three times throughout the course of the year that we actually do hit a negative cash projection. You're right, John, not just at year end.
So it's not even two years? It's more like a year and a half?
That's correct. Okay. Thank you.
That was dessert.
We'll go with cupcakes next time.
Okay. So we don't have anything for a second closed session. So with that, we are adjourned.